Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, September the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaf. Public comment can be made in person but can also be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityoftaf.org. They may also be made by phone to the City Clerk's office at six six one seven six three one two two two. Public comments will be accepted up until five P M. the day of the meeting, and all comments will be read into the record. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with a pledge of allegiance, led by Mayor Protem Orshel Cryer, followed by an invocation from Lloyd Francis. So if you would join us, please.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe bow our heads, please. Father, we thank you for the opportunity again to come and do business, important business, Lord, in business that would affect people all around this community. We ask for your wisdom, your guidance. If there be anyone in the city employees that are sick, that you would touch them, Lord, give them strength and healing. Any city council member and mayor, Lord, may you bring health to them and their families. Father, we pray your blessing upon this community. May there be a prosperity, an outpouring of job opportunities, and an outpouring, oh, God, of opportunity of housing and other issues that are needed for our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, sir.
Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cryer.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
And councilmembers Waldrop and Chavera are absent with notice.
Okay, doing the people's business elsewhere.
Exactly.
All right, very good, thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is a proclamation Finance and Accounting Appreciation Week. If there's anything that you really need to appreciate in government, it's accurate and honest accounting and finance. But that is a rare bird, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Try that up in Sacramento. But guess what? This is City of TAF. So we have a proclamation declaring September twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-three Finance and Accounting Appreciation Week. Whereas the history of accounting as an established practice dates back several millennia, and it's vital to business success. And whereas the field of accounting has undeniably developed significantly since its introduction in pre-modern times, and has experienced robust developments throughout the Middle Ages and the Renaissance period. Whereas the city's finance department provides accounting, financial administration and reporting, budgeting, investment, billing, accounts receivable, accounts payable, and payroll services for the City of TAF. And whereas the finance department staff is privy to the most intimate details of the city and have access to facts and figures we would never collectively understand. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the importance of our finance department staff as they play a critical role in providing accurate and timely information to the city manager and city council so that sound business decisions can be made on behalf of the city and its citizens. Now, therefore, the city council of the City of Taft does hereby formally recognize the City of TAF's finance department staff, and accordingly hereby declares September twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Finance and Accounting Appreciation Week, dated this nineteenth day of September the twenty-third, signed by myself and all the council members in appreciation for your services. So I don't think the finance director is here.
She's not.
I think she's in Montana. But guess what? Christie's here. So we have somebody here to present this to. While you guys applaud, I'll walk down. You get this and five thousand dollar check. Would you like to address the count? Oh, speech.
Thank you very much.
Like a true accounting professional, behind the screen and not in front of the mic. She quietly wanders off in the sunset after taking care of the people's money day in and day out, every day. Thank you very much. All right, next up, item number two, which we don't need tonight, so I don't have to say all that stuff. So item number three, we're going to begin with council statements, not action. Councilman Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I wanted to apologize to the council, especially the city staff, for not being able to make the last meeting. I believe we met the Tuesday after Labor Day, and that holiday just threw me for a loop for some reason. I got to work on Monday, or on Tuesday, and it was Monday in my mind. I spend a lot of time volunteering. Right now, I'm volunteering as a coach for the TAF Wildcats. And after practice, my mind was still on Monday. And by the time I realized I needed to be here, I still smelled like a locker room, and I wanted to save everyone that displeasure. So I decided I wasn't going to make it, but I can apologize for not being here. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, you know what? Glad to have you here. And by the way, air conditioning blows from that direction. Running into that same problem again, I'm upwind. We'll be fine. All right, next up, Mayor Protem Cryer.
Yes, Mayor. I have no comment tonight.
Okay. Well, I have a couple of things. Last night, we had a marvelous barbecue at the Oil Museum, West Side Oil Museum, and it was for the Oil Tech Program. And I got to tell you what an incredible group of young people those people are. Councilman Bryant's part of that. And I've been lucky enough to be a mentor in that program. I think this is my eighth year. And to watch those young people go from being a sophomore to a junior and a senior and see them grow and develop, and the things that they do, and the opportunities that they have because of some very special people in our community, and that's through the Holmes Foundation, and I think they just celebrated a milestone. Four hundred students, they have helped go to college.
Twenty years.
That's right. What an incredible thing that was. So we had a great barbecue. Senator Shannon Grove came and spoke to everybody. She is right on the heels of an incredible accomplishment, getting some Senate bill through to protect victims of human trafficking. Now, I got to tell you something, I've been up there in Sacramento. The first year that she tried to push that through, it's something shouldn't require a lot of pushing. If somebody is so devious as to traffic young people for sex, there is no punishment bad enough for those folks. And there just is not. And I will tell you, the first year that she tried to get that through, it got kicked back. It got shut down, and again this year, it almost did again. And it was just outraged, but her tenacity carried it through, and so it passed. So God bless her for that. And there are a lot of people that were faceless and had no voice that she helped protect. So thank goodness for that. The other thing I want to talk about just briefly, and it'll be brief, and that's the governor's new lawsuit against all the oil companies. Oil companies, and I think there's also a hundred unnamed defendants in that lawsuit. One hundred and thirty-five pages of lawsuit. I haven't read the entire thing yet. I've read enough to know that it is Gavin's clickbait frontline grabbing garbage. I'm telling you, it is garbage. There are more disclaimers in a single paragraph than there is on the average TV ad for a workers' compensation lawyer. I mean, it's that bad. It's not based on facts, it's based on projections, which are not concrete. It's based on maybe, that word is used in there oftentimes. It's just about as concrete as tomorrow's weather. But that is the nature of our governor. You just got to get there on the front pages, got the big climate thing going on over there, the United Nations, and just got to get on out there. The guy is a hypocrite, and he's an elitist, and he victimizes the people that he pretends to represent, and that is a disgusting thing for an elected. And I stand behind those words as an individual, that's Dave Nor talking. But we'll talk more about this lawsuit. Matter of fact, I will tell you that myself and a couple other people will be interviewed tomorrow on a global news outfit. So we'll keep talking about that. That's all I have to say this evening. Next up, item number four, we have a planning commission report, and lucky for us, we have a planning commissioner.
Trying to get this right, I've been told I don't talk loud enough. So. I'm switching to a different program. Give me a second. Thank you. The planning commission met, as it regularly does, and had two items specifically to deal with. One was the extension of conditional use permit for the proposed solar program out. I guess it's kind of wrapped around the city's sewer.
Out there on gas company road.
Yeah, yeah, near you. Of course, they've been having trouble with fish and wildlife, or fish and game. I don't know which, but one of the two. Could be either one, right? And we've given them an extension of two years more on their C U P. They believe they'll be able to get through that process and begin producing some actual work on the property. The second item was tractor supply is brought forth there, conditional use permit. Plans are to take a portion, I think maybe about a third of the Kmart building, to be at the far end of the building from the entrance. And because they do do a lot of outdoor material, things like that, they wanted to have advantage of using the old Kmart garden center. They'll be doing some repair work to the entrance roadway up to their place and some, I think, smoothing out of the parking lot. And as far as I can tell, things are moving smoothly. Talking with our planning director, he'd like to see them get done before December. We'll see. After all, it is only doing interior work. It's not like putting up the whole building, which, across the street, the Dollar General seems to be moving along relatively well as well. The other item that we dealt with was the reorganization, our annual, or semi-annual, pardon me, reorganization of the planning commission. I was elected chair.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Dennis Shirts was thrown into the deep end and is elected as the vice chair. I did tell him, and he didn't seem to like the idea, that I could miss a couple meetings for him. Apparently didn't.
Trial by fire.
Such a great idea. So that covers the planning commission. And just as a comment responding to your discussion of Shannon Grove, I think it's George Skelton, but he's a well-known left political commentator in the L.A. Times. And his opening piece was about a total victory of the Republicans, and specifically talked about how tenacious that Shannon Grove had been in moving that particular bill, getting it out of. Usually thrown into a committee where they die.
It was a very good, very positive article in the L.A. Times.
Yeah, so I think that was an unusual one because he's not the type of person who normally makes those kind of comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Have a good evening. Next up, item number five, department reports. All right.
I'm on the opposite end of the spectrum. I probably don't need the mic. Because I'm fairly loud.
I've been told.
So this is the statistics for the month of August for the police department, not the sheriff's department, for the TAF Police Department. We have a total incidence, we are at nine hundred. Calls for service were four twenty-seven. Officer-initiated incidents were at four seventy-three, a proud number. We did thirty-five traffic stops, combination of vehicle and pet stops of seventy-eight, total officer reports of a hundred and twenty-seven. We had fifty misdemeanor and felony arrests, thirty-five misdemeanor arrests, and of course fifteen felony arrests, and we wrote thirty-four citations. And that takes care of our statistics for the police department for the month of August.
Busy group.
Yeah, we try. I also want to touch bases with everyone with Chili Cook Off, the twenty-third, which is this Saturday at the Petroleum Club, starts at six. You can get there and visit from about five to six o'clock. We'll use that word. Starts at six. All the money that benefits, or that comes from this benefits the Shop With a Cop that the TPOA, the TAF Police Officers Union, puts on every year. And it's a great, it's a great event that they do that for, for the children of Taft. And it's been far-reaching, we've noticed. We've seen a lot of Bakersfield people and others come into our city for that, which we have no problem with it. So I enjoy that the guys and the gals, the troops that actually love putting this on, that they, you can tell that it lights them up, and they really enjoy it. So I'm pretty happy for them. So again, that's on the twenty-third, it's at the Petroleum Club, and it starts at six.
I have two questions.
We can only give you one, Orshel.
I'm going to give you two. I'm going to ask two. You don't have to answer the second one.
You're councilman, you get two.
He only got one answer, so.
On Chili Cook Off, are you going to still have the raffles for the weapon?
I don't know what you're talking about, sir. We actually do have raffles, and there are some raffles going on.
Litany of prizes.
Yes, we have a litany of prizes. There's two of them.
Okay, that's one question.
Okay.
And the other one is, I just want to thank you guys, the police department and everything, for all the good job that you're doing. And they don't see the, some of the public, a lot of public, they praise you and all that. There's always some people in the minority that, you know, they criticize whatever.
We're used to it.
Yeah, I know you are. You've got a tough skin. But, you know, four hundred plus officer-initiated.
Four seventy-three, sir.
Four seventy-three, almost five hundred. You guys took care of where it became called or become an issue. That's amazing, because I hear people telling me, they never see any police out there. This is proving that they're out there doing your job, you're stopping and doing your job there. You can't be everywhere at all times where you're visible. I just want to thank you for, and the police department, let them, your troops know that you're very much appreciated in what they're doing and keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir, and I will pass that on. And it's, and it's, the numbers don't lie. So it's when you have that many officer-initiated incidents, people tend to misunderstand that, well, so a lot of those are arrests. There's fifty of them. So those come with paperwork, time to book, time to transport, and that all takes time, and that all takes staffing. So sometimes you'll just see one car driving around while the other one's busy working somewhere else, doing something. So it's just how it works out. But that is a number that I'm very proud of, and it's been consistent since I've been here. And it's not just because of me, it's because of the troops and their ideology of getting out there and taking people to jail that need to go to jail and making our community safe. And that's all I ask from them.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, can I add something real quick?
Yes, by all means.
So to piggyback on what Councilman Cryer said, just for some clarity for the public, quick math will tell you, officer-initiated alone is one stop, one incident every thirty-eight minutes of every single day of the month of August.
Yes, sir.
That's fantastic. And knowing the climate we have to deal with, especially you guys have to deal with every single day, that's the only way we're going to make meaningful arrests and make a meaningful impact on the community. Because lord knows, it's legal, or it's illegal to be a criminal in the state of California for all intents and purposes.
Definitely is in Taft.
And we appreciate that very, very much.
We're not worried about the rest of California, but in Taft, we hold you to a standard.
Absolutely, and I also wanted to kind of also piggyback where Orshel mentioned. You know, the TPOA, the Police Officers Association, does a lot of these fundraisers, and I want to commend them for all of the work they've been doing, because this is done on their off time.
That's a fact.
You know, they get paid to do a job. They're a member of this association, and they give back to us as a community. And I cannot thank them enough for not only doing the work, but the creativity. I mean, the raffle's a new thing, the Chili Cook Off's a new thing, and I look forward to being a part of those things for years to come. But I want to thank not only you for supporting it, but the staff members and those who wear the badge for doing that. It makes a big impact, and I think I very, very much appreciate it.
Thank you, and I want to give a shout out to one of my dispatchers, Daryl Armstrong. This is her brainchild. This is something that she pushed forward, came to me, had a meeting. She presented what she wanted to do. I thought it was a great idea. And leave it to her, she's picked up the reins and took off with us, and she's done a great job. So she's one of our troops that definitely loves the community and loves to get out in it. And as we do with, we have a few, quite a few that do that, so we're proud of them.
When I was a kid, I grew up in South TAF, we were dirt poor. We took advantage of the Shop With a Cop program. I mean, that was thirty, almost forty years ago. The fact that it's remained is a testament to you guys and to the officers who've continued it on over the generations. But I know the impact personally that it has, and I just can't thank you guys enough.
I appreciate it. We also do the backpacks with the badges, backpacks for badges. And that's something Corey Bilby has picked up and ran with, and that is just a great thing that he does for the community. It's nice to see the children that don't have the opportunity to have a new backpack and the materials they need to go to school and learn. All that stuff's provided to them, along with free haircuts and many other things. So I'm very proud of this group, I really am.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great community involvement. Thank you very much, chief.
You're welcome, sir.
For sure. Okay, next up, city manager statement. City Manager Joan.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to add.
All right, city attorney statement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No statement.
No statements. Future agenda requests this evening, gentlemen.
None for me.
All right then, we'll move on. Consent calendar items nine through thirteen. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by a one-roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that a member of the public would wish to comment on? Seeing none, those items are: item number nine, the September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three regularly scheduled meeting. Item number ten, that's the payment of bills, some six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Item number eleven, monthly report for Kern County Fire Station Number Twenty-One, August, two thousand and twenty-three. Recommendation is receive and file the monthly report for August, two thousand and twenty-three from Kern County Fire Station Number Twenty-One and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section one five oh six oh C three and Section one five three seven eight of the SEQA guidelines. Item twelve is approval of agreement for the purchase of Global Industries' one-tier, three-door lockers for the Taft Police Department. Recommendation is a motion to accept the purchase agreement, quote, "from Global Industrial" for four thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-three cents, and authorize the mayor to sign the attached agreement and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section one five oh six oh C three and Section one five three eight of the SEQA guidelines. Lastly, item thirteen, authorizing bank card services. Recommendation here is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Authorizing Bank Card Services and Repealing and Replacing Prior Resolution Number four one six one dash twenty-two", and find that the activity is not a project per California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Sections one five oh six oh C three and Section one five three seven eight of the SEQA guidelines. Does any member of the council wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar?
None here.
Item thirteen?
Item thirteen? Okay, and I'm going to remove item eleven. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve items nine, ten, and twelve of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Cryer.
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant.
Yes.
And Mayor Nor.
Yes, and that passes on a three-o vote, because we've got a couple of guys missing. All right, item number eleven, monthly report for Kern County Fire Station Number Twenty-One, August, two thousand and twenty-three. City Manager Joan.
Thank you, Mayor, as you read.
Okay. Well, the reason I did this is because we have a distinguished representative of Kern County Fire, and he has taken the time to come here and visit with us. And I'll tell you, one of the things that really stands out is either the firebugs ran out of fire-starting equipment in August or something, but in July, there were three hundred and thirty-four calls and eighty-three fires responded to by Engine Twenty-One in August. That three hundred and thirty-four dropped to two twelve, and the eighty-three fires down to thirty-seven. A huge difference. If you would be so kind, sir, step up here. And that's another group of people that make this city a wonderful, safe place to live. And it's our first responders, and you're the other critical arm of the first responders. So thanks for being a part of our meeting.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and city council, you're correct with the numbers. I think July really tells Fourth of July, right? That's where a lot of those fires come. But when we see almost triple the number of fires that we typically see in any ever given month, we typically see in the winter months, calls drop down a little bit. Obviously, fires drop down, humidity's up, less activity outside, rain. But as the winter month, or the summer months start climbing, the temperature climbs, the call volume just skyrockets. And looking at those numbers, you're right, July, three hundred and thirty-four calls, eighty-three fires, when we're typically around thirty fires for Taft, that's pretty substantial.
That's eighty more calls for service than any other month of the year.
Right.
I mean, wow, that was huge.
Yeah, July was very, very busy. And just so you know, not just in Taft, it was busy throughout the entire county.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, absolutely.
Those are all calls for the service area for the station, correct? Not just within the City of Taft?
Correct.
Okay, I thought so. Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you for your service, and thank you, tell your, like a chief said, tell your troops their job well done, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your guys' support. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time. Thanks for your time. Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to receive and file the monthly report for August 2023 from Kern County Fire Station Number 21 and find that the activity is not a project for California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, as set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the CEQA guidelines.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Cryer.
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant.
Yes.
And Mayor Noor.
Yes, and that passes on a three-o vote. Once again, thank you all. All right, next up, item number 13, authorizing bank cards. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. On July 19th, 2022, city council adopted Resolution Number 4161-22, authorizing twenty credit cards to be issued. Since then, the changes occurred in positions and positions responsibility requiring the resolution to be updated to reflect those changes and increase the number of authorized cards. And I will point out that there has been some changes due to fraud. We used to have general cards if someone went to training. Now, they have to have a name associated with them. So, anybody that may go to training needs a card. And if someone, unless they're not seeking reimbursement, you're... You don't seek a card, but you're not seeking training or reimbursement. So, I just wanted to make that clear.
All right, very good, thank you very much, sir. Mayor Protem Cryer, you asked that this be reminded from, removed from the consent calendar. Excuse me.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to remove my name on the credit cards, I don't need one.
So, you won't be ever going to training, or?
Well, if I do, I'll bring a receipt in.
We don't do that, that's why you got a card.
That's why you have a card.
Policy is, we don't, that creates work, and it's not policy anymore. Policy is that we use credit cards, travel policy, for council members and city employees.
So, I take it, so if the mayor goes out and goes to a function, and it takes, and it takes, as an example, Mayor, that he couldn't get reimbursed, what he?
He understands that he's not going to seek reimbursement, that's why he doesn't request it.
That's the question I put out there, because I don't know... So, like say, for example, say I want to go to the Dega Cities Convention next year, that...
Our city policy is you get PDAM for your incidentals, and you use a city credit card for your fuel and for your check into your hotel.
Okay, that's good clarification, thank you, that's all I had, Mayor.
All right, very good.
We understand that you may only use it once a year, you may only use it, those cards usually go for four years. And that's why we have to have so many with names on them now, is because of the fraud policy. Most of these cars seldom get used, but that's why we have them in names. We just ran through this problem a couple of weeks ago with the PD. We didn't have enough cards for training, because everyone has to have a name on a card now because of fraud. So, I actually called our finance director, and she informed me that's why we have to have so many cards. It is, but it's easy to keep them in the vault, we don't use them, we don't use them.
Thank you for that clarification, I didn't realize.
And understanding that you don't carry your card with you, and the public can know that, that you don't carry the card, but in an instance, you do go to travel, we have it there for you. So, we just secure them in the vault in case someone travels. So, very seldom do council member cards get used, I will point that.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, very, any other questions?
None here.
All right. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Authorizing Bank Card Services and Find That the Activity Is Not a Project for the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, as Set For in Sections 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the CEQA Guidelines."
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Cryer.
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant.
Yes.
And Mayor Noor.
Yes, and that passes on a three-o vote, thank you all very much.
I just wanted to hear you say that, again, I see what they...
Yeah, thanks, I'm getting so good at that. CEQA tongue twister.
Start running off the tongue before you know it.
Well, guess what? That brings our open session portion of this evening's meeting to a close. I am sorry, and I want to let all the people out there in the audience, please don't rush for the exit. We don't need anybody getting trampled to death. So, take your time, you'll all get out of here, trust me. We will be going into closed section for a couple of different items. Item A is conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two or three of subdivision D of Section 54956.9D, one potential case. Secondly, item B, conference with labor negotiator Craig Jones, city manager, government code Section 54957.6, all units. We're going into closed session. Good evening, everybody, stay safe.